Evening, everybody. Welcome to the planning commission meeting. It is seven oh six. On the eleventh of May. Apologies for the late start here. We were in another meeting. Let's start off with. Let's see. Gary, can you, can you do roll call for me?
Sure. We have Michelle Williams.
Yeah.
Cole Davidson.
Yeah.
Tom Fitting's absent. Rich Gordon.
Here.
Kirk Scott, you're here. And we have Brian Bomback, who's an alternate who you can seat.
Okay.
And that's it for the membership.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let the record show that we are going to see Mr. Bomback as our, as an alternate. And that gives us how many? That gives us five, one, two. Four. Okay. And. See. All right. So additions to the agenda. I have none. Call for public delegations. Do we know if anybody, any members of the public are wishing to address the commission? You can send a chat in the chat window.
If you're with Xander, I don't know who that is. If they have any public comment or public delegation, that would be the time. They'll have to unmute themselves.
We'll give them a second here if we don't.
I don't have to give me, I'm just, this is in, I'm just listening and I'm just curious.
Well, thank you for attending, Xander. Welcome.
Thank you.
And we're gonna press on then. So there's no public delegations wishing to address the commission tonight, which brings us to communications. Mr. Gashell, do we have any communication?
I have none that was been received recently.
Okay, thank you. Zoning representative. Anyone at the last zoning?
I'm here.
Hi.
Oh, no, that, and that.
Actually, actually, that would be a member from our commission that was. Would have been ex officio to yours.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're fine. Thank you for coming and. So, all right. We don't have a. Zoning representative from our commission here.
I have upcoming of the five twenty, I have Nicole Davidson and then Thomas Fitting on six, three. I think we talked about getting you guys a calendar. So we're working on that. I'll get that pumped out to you just so you can follow. But that's what I have Jen had put down here was those two dates.
Okay, so Nicole, do you figure you'll be able to make the meeting on the twentieth?
Yes, I will.
Excellent. Thank you. And Mr. Fitting's not here, so we can't ask him.
But I will let him know he's scheduled for June third.
Thank you. All right, so that brings us to ex officio, Mr. Salerno. I received the note that he was not going to be able to make it. The meeting is a schedule conflict. So, Mr. Gashell, do you, as planning director, do you have anything to report?
Uh. Not currently. I think things are kind of moving forward as they have been. He had, I know we couldn't get you into science and my large, Rochelle took care of that. That was for the steamer subdivision. So that should go forward and be filed. That's really it, kind of. Quiet in that regard. We're really focused on P O C D and. Wetlands has kind of been ramping up, so. Trying to balance, balance the two there.
Thank you. And thank you, Michelle, for signing the my Lars. Appreciate the, appreciate that. Okay, so that brings us to. Subcommittees. Michelle, would you like to speak regarding the plan of conservation development?
Sure.
Committee?
Thank you. Um, apologies to everyone. We were kind of just wrapping up right before the meeting, so that's. I was, we were the cause of the late start, so thank you for your patience. As I think we've discussed with this commission during meetings in the past, one of the goals of this, this go around of the update for the. P O C D was that the subcommittee stay together. Following the submission of the newly adopted P O C D so that we can act as. You know, a facilitator or support for the recommendations in the document being enacted and used as a plan. Over the next ten years. So since our last planning commission meeting, I have visited a number of other town boards and commissions. Reminding them that we just adopted this document and going through the various sections that apply to their. Different boards or commissions. I caught up with Parks and Rec, Agribusiness, Historic Properties. Water for Eastline Shellfish Commission. Joe Berga and. Yes, that was it. And we will be speaking to the Board of Selectmen at their May nineteenth meeting, so open invitation for anyone who would like to. Be there for that. One of the things that we're. Trying to do now as a subcommittee is identify some of the first things that we may want to reach out and start to try to tackle. And. One of the more urgent items is kind of identifying and making a case for some of the projects in the P O C D. That might be a good fit for the American Rescue. Fund monies that the town will be receiving. I believe in June. As a result of COVID relief package. So the Board of Selectmen has been meeting and reviewing a number of different. Recommendations for how to spend that money. There are some parameters around it. That it cannot. Add to the municipal budget now permanently going forward. We can't use it to pay for things that we already were doing and budgeting for. But it can be used for different capital projects and programs and like, so a lot of it. Fits in right with the resiliency and sustainability recommendations and projects that we outline in the plan, so. That'll probably be the focus of the meeting on the nineteenth. We're going to meet as a subcommittee six times a year, every other month before this meeting, so open invitation for that as well. You're welcome to. Stop in and of course we'll update this group as a regular agenda item each month as well. What else? Kirk, Gary, Rich?
Well, I guess I didn't report. I said I didn't have anything to report, but I do regarding the corridor study. I mentioned it to the subcommittee. Like we heard word from the Council of Governments today that DOT assigned project numbers to our study and looks, they're looking to start. They assigned a start date of October one. That may mean we moved up or pushed back depending on, there's a few more things we got to work out with DOT. But that is finally moving forward after a long wait. Something like almost two years now. Year and a half. So that I have that to report, but as that relates to. What we were talking about in the subcommittee and sidewalks. These are the things that we would consider to be relatively simple implementations that may qualify for those funds. And the subcommittee, as mostly we're all there except for Nicole and Brian. They, we've already identified a handful of those things, so I think, I think they'll fall into that category of funds that, that being said. I would also note that any infrastructure projects. Most of them should be, I would anticipate coming before the commission for an eight dash twenty four review in that regard. Not all will, because not all will qualify for an eight dash twenty four, but the acquisition of land, things like that. Would, would fall under that eight dash twenty four review, so. At least from that perspective, we'll have a role and, and it's, you know, the spending of that money and whether it's consistent with our planet development. I would think, but again, the board could spend it in a completely different way. Just.
So in the next month, I'll be working to reach out to some other boards and commissions. I would like to make sure that we get in front of the Board of Finance and the zoning commission. Among others. So again, feel free to just reach out. Norm, anything that we, I want, I feel bad, we. Kind of dragged you into this meeting and to wrap up our discussion, but was there any loose ends that you wanted to bring up?
Legally, I'm not authorized to speak at your meeting.
Oh, that's right.
But. Who's gonna?
I think as it pertains to the P O C D subcommittee, I think you, you could be invited to speak as a committee member.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, I think so.
All right.
So as you'd be speaking as a subcommittee member to the planning commission, that's acceptable.
What? What was the question? Excuse me.
Was there anything that we needed to wrap up? I know we were kind of running short on time and quickly ended the meeting, adjourning it to this one. And so I just wanted to make sure that we finished kind of any. Loose ends from that so that we can let you get to the rest of your night.
I don't think so. I think we had a bit of a definite start, a couple of ideas. Certainly, there's no limit to what we can do.
Agree.
That's all I can think of.
All right, so I guess that ends my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Michelle. Just to comment on, on my part and just thank you to all the members of that committee. Especially Michelle doing all the extra work. This is where the proverbial rubber meets the road kind of thing where Michelle is doing a really good job. And Gary and the town staff, but doing a really good job of pushing this forward and not letting all that hard work that everybody put into the plan. Just kind of fall to the wayside until the next ten years. So kudos to everybody for staying involved, especially Michelle. So thank you for that. And. I guess that brings us to the chairman section. I don't have anything else to report. So we'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April thirteenth, two thousand twenty one?
I submit a motion, Richard Gordon, to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Richard. Do I hear a second?
I'll second Michelle Williams.
Thank you, Michelle. Any discussion? Okay. So hearing no discussion, let's move the vote. Michelle?
I.
Let's see, Richard Gordon?
I.
Nicole Davidson?
Hi.
And Brian, I always mess up your last name on, I'm sorry for that, Brian. Mr. Bomback, yes, thank you.
Hi.
Hi, and my vote is, I'm gonna abstain, so let the record show that the meeting minutes are approved. Which brings us to public hearings and there are none tonight. And we have two zoning referrals. Tonight, zoning referral, A, application of the Eastline zoning commission for a text amendment to the Eastline zoning regulation, section twenty five point four point three dash one. To add, should a public hearing special permit be continued? The applicant shall modify or replace the sign and language announcing the continuance. Which shall include the time, date, and location of said hearing. Let's see. Do you have anything that you want to address regarding this or?
Yeah, I did provide the commission with the memo. I'm gonna pull that up here in just a second. Get it on the screen. Doesn't look like they were posted.
I thought they were.
So I.
I thought I saw something.
I see, I have tapped, the zoning referral was posted, public notice.
Your memo was there.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
Notice memo. I think it's. I'll share the screen. Okay. So here's the, my memo, May tenth. I would just note here's probably the first referral that we've used the new P O C D. So it's kind of interesting. So what I did is I highlighted the twenty twenty P O C D goals. There are eighteen of them and you can read through. It looks like I'm missing. Looks like it's missing page two. I don't see it here. Page one, two. And then page three. Okay, well, at any rate. Here was my quick analysis down and dirty. With compatibility with the two thousand twenty P O C D. This other way. Okay. I indicated as the proposed regulation would require the public notice signage, which is currently required to be posted on the premise fifteen days prior to the public hearing for a special permit. To be updated, replaced, or modified. In the event a public hearing for a special permit is continued and shall announce the continuance and include the time, date, and location of said hearing. The proposed regulation continues to support the town's coordinated cooperative system of land use decision making to ensure that development continues to be high performance standards. It, my thought was it's really neither inconsistent or consistent, but it would be in keeping with that one goal, which was goal number two. I do know that there's some, you know, just as an FYI, there's some current pending legislation that would do away with all of that. If it were to be passed, so that's something that we'll keep our eye on. If it were to be passed, that wouldn't mean that, I don't know for certain whether or not the town, if we enact zoning regulations that require it. I, my understanding is we can be more restrictive than the state statute, but we can't be any less. So by adopting this regulation, at least this would be in place even if the state made changes to the legislation. Short of it usurping zoning law like affordable housing does. In that, we kind of. That idea. So ultimately. I found it relatively consistent with what we're trying to do. I would say there's, you know, in this case, there's no cost to the town, although the developer, the applicant will absorb those costs to changing the sign. So that's all I have on that referral.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gashell. Commission members, does anyone have any questions or comments that they would like to bring forward regarding this or? I only have one and I, I mean, I think it, I like, I like, and it, my comment is, is really just to say that I like the, I like, I like the fact that we. Are making a. An explicit attempt to notify everybody of when the next public hearing is, like, other than on the website. But I kind of like it from that point of view because it, it does help notify the public as they're driving by whatever. Property or, or whatever that, that it has the signage of. So I like it from that point of view. Does anyone else have any? Other opinions or thoughts?
I think that anything we can do to improve transparency and allow people to get involved in the process is something. That I would like to see us do. And just knowing how many times public hearings get continued, I think sometimes people can't make it and then they think that they've missed their opportunity when they really haven't.
Yeah, I think the, the big impetus was that the public hearing, you can call a public hearing, open it and continue it and have no discussion. And if you do that, right, granted, you do have a statutory time limit in which to conduct the public hearing. But when that happens and then by the time you get, let's say we have a special meeting and you've canceled twice. And you hold a special meeting, well, well, it's noticed via the agenda. There's no additional public notice in the paper and there's no change to the sign. And so you do lose that crowd and the crowd diminishes. And while that's favorable for the applicants, it's not so favorable for the general public who may want to have commented. So that's kind of, I think, what the zoning commission has observed and they're looking to, to rectify that issue.
I agree with your point there, Gary, and, and actually, it makes me think maybe. Maybe they need to take it a step further, just the signage. Maybe they do need to put it up on the website or, right, there's no requirement for them to. Oh, they have posted it. I think my internet is.
Hook it up.
Yeah.
That, I think it came back. Anyway, I was just kind of rambling on that and saying that. I almost feel like. Maybe, maybe there, maybe they do need to take it a step further and make another public notice.
Yeah, I, again, I'm not certain where that'll all end up. But with the signage, at least the sign would go up fifteen days prior to the start of the public hearing as it normally does. And then if the public hearings continue, did have to make the change to the sign.
Yeah.
I think I would agree that we're as transparent as we possibly can.
Right. Any comments or? Thoughts? Questions? Does anyone? Have any ideas while taking a stab at a motion?
I will take a stab. But I will.
There is some general language on the memo.
Yes, and I had it right here when I volunteered. Just. Lost it.
I just.
Very hazard on it.
Oh, you're good. You just pull it up. Okay, thank you.
Gary, you want to minimize the, the, the people box on your?
Sorry, yeah. There we are.
I still.
All right, well, in any case. I'll move that the Eastline Planning Commission find the proposed text amendment referenced in our conversation here consistent with the Eastline twenty twenty Plan of Conservation and Development. And I don't believe that we are required to provide reasons.
No, not only if.
So I'll just. Leave it at that.
Thank you, Michelle. Do I hear a second?
Second, Nicole Davidson.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, so let's. Any further discussion? Okay, here are no further discussion. I'm gonna start a vote. Nicole Davidson?
I.
Brian Bomback? Richard Gordon?
I.
Michelle Williams?
I.
Kirk Scott?
I.
Let the record show that we are approving. The application for the text amendment. Zoning regulation, section twenty five point four point three dash one. As presented. Which moves us to. Item B, application of Todd Sokowski for a text amendment to the Eastline zoning regulation, section twenty point two eight and twenty five point three point three. To allow Tap Room Brewery in CB zones by way of special permit. Mr. Gashell, do you have any? Any? Comments or what would like to talk for this one?
I did. This, my memo was a little longer than the last, but again, I'm not seeing it on the website. I see the referral for the text amendment on Tap Room Brewery and public notice and just the public notice memo from me up there. So I guess I can, I can just read from this memo again. It starts out by providing the twenty twenty P O C D goals. But upon review of the referral, I noted that in twenty twelve, the commission found the request to amend the regulation to allow for taproom breweries consistent with the P O C D. And subsequently, taproom breweries are now allowed within the CB zone by special permit. And. The proposed application referenced above would be permit Tap Room Brewery. Again, that's a brewery that produces no more than five thousand barrels or one hundred fifty five thousand US gallons. Within the central business zoning district to serve fermented beverages outdoors, provided that food is provided during the hours of operation. The food in this case, unlike a typical restaurant, may be from outside vendors and or restaurants located on or near the premises, which would be, which is to be deemed compliant with the requirement. So I found that.
Wait, Gary, did you say that, that we already had approved the text amendment for this?
Note, to allow taproom breweries within the CB zone.
Right.
And so now they want to be able to serve fermented beverages outdoors. But in, in order to do so, we allow for outdoor dining under the zoning regulations, but you have to serve food. In order to serve the fermented beverage outdoors. So what they're trying to do here is change the regulations, which would allow them to serve their beverages outdoors. But because they're not a restaurant and produce any meals or snacks or foods, they want to use the surrounding community, if you will, of restaurants and vendors to provide that food. So they would be seated in their outdoor dining space. They'd be able to get a beverage from a server while they ate a meal from some other restaurant. So in reviewing that, well, that's an interesting use of land and I kind of like the idea that. You're pulling from the surrounding businesses. So from an economic development perspective, I think that's pretty consistent. And I found that in chapter eight, under Commercial Industrial Development, section eight point two, recommendations, numbers three and ten. They recommend the following. Item three was, recommendation three was consider amending allowed uses or uses by special permit. In the residential zones adjacent to CA and CB zone. So this was specific to residential increasing home-based businesses, et cetera. So, but if, as you read on. It, it says, I'm sorry. Okay, to, I'm sorry, consider many allowed uses or use specimen in the residential zones adjacent to CA and CB zones to allow for more, quote, here's the flexibility in home-based businesses and uses. Well, I'm kind of looking at this as saying, well, there's not a home-based business, but it certainly provides more flexibility. For this business. So I, that's the closest I could find any consistency with that. And then item recommendation ten was continue to support actions that strengthen Ionex Downtown CB Commercial District, where much progress in this area has already been achieved since two thousand nine. So I found that. Serve, the serving of the fermented beverages for them outdoors during the hours, the premises open. Would be consistent with the P O C D. It would, you know, while the proposed regulation does not allow more flexibility to home-based businesses, it does amend it already permitted use, which would continue to support the actions downtown. I also found in chapter nine, under Economic Development, section nine point six, recommendations, numbers three, five, and six. Recommendation three is to enhance Nianic and Flinders Village by taking the following actions, and that's A, continue to encourage a range of mixed land uses. To happen in commercial zones and along state collector roads. Take advantage of existing infrastructure by encouraging adaptive reuse of buildings and sites. New commercial buildings should be located close to road with parking on the side or rear of the plot. And B, counter-stripped development by redeveloping large parking areas into more efficient layouts and shared use lots. Curb cuts can be eliminated and additional structures erected to enhance the edge conditions. While this proposal doesn't do any of that, it certainly, I think, works. While this proposal doesn't do any of that, it certainly, I think, works to, you know, their current, the brewery's current location is conducive to that. But it certainly, I think, encouraging a range of mixed uses to take advantage of what's already out there. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Recommendation five, promote compatible businesses in appropriate locations to foster local employment and opportunities. Favorable tax base, the provisions of business services for local residents, build a strong year-round economy through continued support of downtown as a year-round business and employment center. Recommendation six was encourage the expansion of existing year-round businesses and establish a new year-round business as a downtown Niannan and a manner, and a manner that promotes a cohesive, pedestrian-friendly, mixed-use retail service in residential area through the village. So I found as the proposed regulation would allow both new and existing taproom breweries within the commercial business district by special permit to provide for the serving of fermented beverages outdoors, provided food is available during the hour such premises are open. It would continue to support recommendations five and six. So again, some general language for a proposed resolution followed. So I believe, in my opinion, I think it's pretty consistent with the, with the P O C D. It'll be up to the zoning commission whether or not the the food issue, you know, how they'll handle that. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Gary. Does anyone from the commission have any questions or comments? Michelle?
I'll just add that I think there's even some more in there. I think all of Gary's examples were spot on. But I think too, there's some there's some recommendations kind of supporting agriculture and aquaculture as important economic activities that are also supported by this, given our local, you know, like shell, I mean, I think I've seen us at various things, have the oyster truck out there, you know, at events where there's outdoor food like this. So I would say that's even another one to tack on. The availability of involving, you know, local land and aqua farmers in this endeavor too.
Yeah, I like, I like, I like the fact that they are promoting this as like a symbiotic kind of relationship between the breweries and all the food vendors and restaurants in town and everything. I really like that. And Gary, can you, can you just remind any, everyone or anyone who doesn't know exactly where the CB zone is? Do you have a map handy or can you?
Yeah.
Briefly?
Second.
So that's just the downtown area, basically. And while he's bringing that up, do I, does, does anyone else have any comments or questions?
I would just note, I was speaking with the zoning official and he did note some concerns with vendors. If, if the brewery was to bring in food trucks and such, they would then be competing with the existing businesses. And I think there was some concern there. But again, as I read the regulation, it looks like it's really geared toward trying to promote and work with the existing businesses and restaurants. But again, it does leave the door open for, say, things like food trucks.
Well, I've seen food trucks down there. How, how are they doing that? Is that, that's by permit too? You need a?
I don't know that the food trucks have a permit from the zoning commission or the official to do what they do. They may have a vending permit from the, I think, the selectman's office. I believe vendors can get, like when we have Celebrate Eastline and all the vendors, they, they're supposed to get a permit from the selectman's office for vending for the day. Light purple area is all of the CB zone. And then at East Pat, it picks up as, in Black Point Road, it picks up as commercial, general. CA commercial. That's the extent there.
Thank you for that. And and the other thing that, just, just to highlight too, is this is all by special permit. So if, if something were to get like into a contentious state, they always have the option of pulling the permit. So that would be, you know, that would be their, that would be their penalty for not following the rules.
Would, yeah, I don't know that they would hold, pull the permit per se, as this is written. But the, the zoning official could enforce the regulation.
Right.
And and issue orders and say you need to corrective action. Whereas the outdoor dining permits that are issued now are, are applied for every year.
Yeah.
And they will either just deny it if there was an issue. I guess if they had good reason, I don't know that. You know, how, how that, I haven't seen them deny one yet, so I don't know how that would necessarily work out. I know they've held off on issuing it until they figured out whatever inconsistency there was that had to be addressed before approving it. But again, I haven't seen them deny one yet. It's not to say that they won't in the future, but yeah, they, they would just enforce the reg versus not just pulling the permit. I don't know that they can revoke it. But that's, other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, so it sounds like, all right, any, any other questions? Well.
Yeah. Yeah. I do see, I do see food trucks in that area usually, you know, providing service. I'm sorry, I assume they have all their permits and orders, so.
As would I, I, but again, I don't, you know, again, I don't know. It's a zoning enforcement issue. But I mean, I, I think, again, if there's food trucks already there, they're vending in town, there are no more competitors than the existing businesses themselves.
All right. Let's see, does you have your memo handy there, Gary, with some?
I have the other.
Oh, that's right.
Basic language at the bottom.
Yeah, well, I'm not hearing much in the way of negative comments here, so drafting them, drafting a drafting a emotion shouldn't be all that difficult, right? Somebody.
Make a motion to find it consistent with the twenty twenty P O C D.
Okay, do I hear a motion to find it consistent with the P O C D?
I submit a motion. I find a text amendment to the zoning regulations consistent with the twenty twenty P O C D.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Do I hear a second?
Second, Nicole Davidson.
Thank you, Nicole. Any further discussion? All right, here are none. Let's move to vote. See, Brian Baumback?
I.
Thank you. See, Rich Gordon?
I.
Nicole Davidson?
Hi.
Michelle Williams?
Hi.
Kirk Scott? I. Let the record show that the application for the text amendment to zoning regulations twenty point twenty-eight and twenty-five point three point five are consistent. Which moves us to municipal referrals, which there are none. Old business bylaws.
Bylaws. So my job was to get you the updated version. I left it on here. I just hadn't gotten to that yet. So as soon as I get the iteration back to you, we, we can discuss it at the next meeting. So my apologies.
No worries, Gary.
I'd like to get it done for the next, because it is a simple, kind of a quick fix.
So good.
Next month and.
Yeah, this is our own timeline here, so that's it's perfectly fine. All right, and no business is none, so which brings us to adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Nicole Davidson.
Very welcome.
Do I hear a second?
I second Richard Gordon.
Thank you, Richard. All right. The Baumback? We're, we're, are we?
You're gonna need a vote.
Yeah, let's vote. Brian Baumback?
Yes, I have to adjourn. Is that what you're asking me?
Yes, thank you. Richard Gordon?
I.
Michelle Williams?
I.
Nicole Davidson?
I.
Kirk Scott, I. Let the record show, seven forty-seven, meeting is adjourned.